Can you hear us online? Can you hear us online, okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you. Okay, we are ready.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 27, 2025, to order. Notice of option to recess into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.02. Notice is hereby given to the members of the commission and to the general public that at this meeting, the commission may vote to go into executive session, which will be, which will not be open to the public. We would do that for legal advice and discussion with the commission's attorney on any items listed on this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. If we can now have roll call.
Carol Mandino.
Present.
Joshua Maher.
Present.
Christine Sheehy.
Present.
CJ Lukey.
Present.
Mary Norton.
Present.
Ian Sharp.
Present.
Megan Weller.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're open for public comment. Any member of the public may address the commission on any subject within their jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the agenda. To address the commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Is there any public comment right now? Nothing online. Hearing and seeing none. We'll move on to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from August 13, 2025. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as written? Move to approve. Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
So the motion's been made by Commissioner Lucky and seconded by Commissioner Sharp. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. We are on to item five, which is the public hearing for a, a public hearing for a conditional use permit request from Hugh McMahon on behalf of Two Hawks Design and Development. Item, well, we don't have an item number there. I'll let, let me see the item number. Is not listed there either. Can you give us the item number?
The PZ number?
Okay, thank you. So it's PZ 2500134. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me? Is this on? Okay. It doesn't sound like it's on from here. Okay, so my name is Dustin Stifler. I'm the associate planner with the current planning team here at the city of Flagstaff. Chair, vice chair commissioners, I'm here before you this evening to once again ask you for a conditional use permit for a single-family high occupancy housing development. I know that we've seen a number of these before. I'm not sure if you would like me to abbreviate these presentations. I see a lot of nods.
If you could, please.
Excellent. And so, yeah, I guess just to give you a quick overview, it is another home within Pine Canyon, specifically within the Pine Run subdivision. It's on a lot that is about .46 acres and this home is proposing five bedroom and five bedrooms and five bathrooms. And so it's the five bathrooms that we're here tonight to request the CUP. And this home will be 4,792 square feet. Again, have five bedrooms and five bathrooms. I guess I can, from all of the findings that we're required to to satisfy, staff finds that all the findings have been met for this case. And I'll just skip ahead here to the, I guess I should also say that, again, this was, did have a participate, public participation plan. The public hearing notifications were all mailed out, signs were installed on the property and staff, myself, did have an ad run in the AZ Daily Sun in early August. For this specific property, there were no comments that were received. And so based on the findings as stated in the staff report, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve conditional use permit, PZ 2500134, with the following condition, that the development of the site shall substantially conform to the plans as presented with the conditional use permit application. And I'm open to answer any questions and I know that our applicant is also attending virtually as well if you have any questions for them.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dustin. Is there any questions for Dustin or the developer? Any discussion? Are we ready for a motion? All right. So Commissioner.
I move that in accordance with the findings and staff recommendations that we approve the conditional use permit for PZ 2500134 with the conditions as recommended.
Second, so Commissioner Norton made the motion and it was seconded by Commissioner Lukey. Is there any other discussion now that we've made the motion? Mary?
I just want to say thanks for participating in the process again and for the public that's here. Maybe we should explain a little bit how this happens. These estate homes get caught up in the HOH and that's why they come forward to us.
Because they have a fifth bedroom.
Because they have a bathroom. So that's the process that they're going through. So thank you.
So you'll hear this, we have three of these to hear today. So, okay, thank you, Commissioner Norton. Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So then we're on to the next one. It is PZ 2500133.
Again, this is for a single-family high occupancy housing development conditional use permit. This property is located at 3742 South Woodland Hills Drive, again, within the Pine Run subdivision just on the way. And this time, this home will be proposing five bedrooms and six bathrooms. Staff did find that the required findings have been met. And with the public participation, this applicant did receive one comment in support of the project. Again, we ran the ad in the Daily Sun and public hearing notifications were mailed out and signs posted. And with the findings stated in the staff report provided to you, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve conditional use permit, PZ 2500133, with the following conditions, that the development of the site shall substantially conform to the plans as presented with the conditional use permit application. And again, I am here for questions as well as the applicant.
Are there any questions for Dustin or the applicant? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
Thank you.
In accordance with the findings, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve conditional use permit, PZ 2500133, with the conditions.
Is there a second to that?
A second.
So the motion was made by Commissioner Sharp and seconded by Commissioner Norton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I'm going to ask for discussion again, just in case we have any online discussion. And the knocking is not for our discussion, it's the builders. Okay, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And now we'll move on to item C, which is PZ 2500135. Dustin, I'll go to you.
Yes. So our final conditional use permit request this evening is for a property at 3646 South Woodland Hills Drive. Again, this is in the Pine Run subdivision in Pine Canyon. This, this home will have six bedrooms, six bathrooms. And as with the other two this evening, staff did find that all of the findings that are required to be met, to be granted a conditional use permit have been, have been met. And so with that, there were no comments received during the public participation. Again, the ad was run and notifications mailed and signs posted. And according to the findings that were presented in the staff report provided to you, staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission approve conditional use permit, PZ 2500135, with the condition that the development of the site shall substantially conform to the plans as presented with the conditional use permit application. And again, if you have any questions for myself or the applicant, we're here.
Any questions?
Just wanted to say thanks. Thanks Dustin for your work on these. Sorry, we're blowing through them, but I'm sure you appreciate it.
It's okay. Thank you all too.
Thank you, Dustin. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Is there a motion?
Go ahead. I move that we approve the request for a conditional use permit for PZ 2500135 according to the, with the conditions.
Second.
So it's been, the, the motion was made by Commissioner Norton and seconded by Commissioner Sharp. Are there any, is there any discussion? My only discussion is I'm glad I don't have to clean these homes. Any other discussion? Okay, I think we're ready for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries and Dustin, thank you for abbreviating your report and doing all the work behind the scenes.
Of course.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item D, which is PZ, I want you to know, that's the fastest we've gone through any items ever, I think. Item D, PZ 2500041. And that's the Single Use Residential and Adaptive Reuse Incentives. And I'll hand it off to Tiffany.
Thank you so much, Chair. The same offer is here, both of these items have had the works done.
And I, can, if you're online, can you please mute yourself? Thank you.
I make the same offer tonight if you'd like me to abbreviate the staff summaries.
No? I'm not sure everybody would like that.
Okay. Single Use Residential and Adaptive Reuse. Why is this amendment happening? Proposition 442 authorized a general obligation bond of $20 million for the creation of rental and homeownership opportunities for residents in Flagstaff in 2022. This funding will allow the city of Flagstaff to partner with private developers, nonprofits, including, included to repurpose existing and available building and spaces into rental opportunities for the residents of Flagstaff. The, our housing division is just about to present to city council how they intend to disperse these bond funds. We thought that it would be a good partnership to include an incentive for these types of projects at this point in time. This type, this incentive focuses on both single-use residential and adaptive reuse, and I'll explain both separately. This is a first sort of step entry into talking about single-use residential, which is really allowing 100% residential projects in commercial zones. There is a big push to go by rate and allow 100% residential projects in commercial zones. We are looking at that as part of the last cap project, and so there may be future amendments moving forward. But in the meantime, until we have those final recommendations on our code analysis project, we'd like to just partner in terms of this housing bond, which is also specifically for affordable housing projects as an incentive at this point in time. So we'll go through this a little bit more. The code, I just talked about, I should switch the slides first before I talk about it, but again, the code analysis project has identified this conditional use permit as a potential impediment to increasing our housing stock, especially in commercial areas. Commercial areas are often, they often become, not targeted, but they are desirable for multifamily development. One, because they don't generally border other single-family residential developments, and that's where some of the friction can lie in some of these development cases. So what does this amendment do? This amendment includes two new definitions for our code, adaptive reuse and single-use residential. It creates two new affordable housing incentives for adaptive reuse and single-use. It's for single-use, it's dropping that conditional use permit. And then there are other really good provisions for adaptive reuse, like not having to do the parking, not having to redo landscaping, or having to meet site planning design standards, which we all know are really definitely impossible on an adaptive reuse project. Adaptive reuse projects by their nature tend to be very expensive for any developer to undertake, especially if they're converting, converting something very commercially designed and developed into something residential, because the standards to go from one to another are pretty extensive. This relocates an existing affordable housing incentive for high occupancy housing as well into the affordable housing section of the code. I'm just moving it. There's this weird exemption that's found in our definitions. I'm just moving it over into the affordable housing exemptions. It's been on the books since 2022. This also provides reduced parking incentives for non-residential adaptive reuse projects. And we'll get more into that and I'll explain what that looks like. And also there's just a clarification in our, so when I get into a section, I always like to go in and clarify and clean up that section as a whole, so I don't have to come back in the future. So a little bit of cleaning house in there. So what are these definitions? Single-use residential is just that, a development containing only residential uses. This really only comes into play in our commercial zones. Adaptive reuse is the repurposing of an existing building from the use for which it was constructed to a new use by preserving the elements of the existing building rather than demolition. So where we see in this in our community, we've seen a number of older hotels, motels be transformed into transitional and long-term housing opportunities for folks. So the new affordable housing incentive, so it's important to understand that single-use residential and adaptive reuse, adaptive reuse overlap, but they're not the same thing. So for single-use residential, single-use residential in commercial zones, this provision is not specific to adaptive reuse and may include new construction projects. And essentially, 20% of the housing units at 80% of, at 80% AMI will basically get rid of that conditional use permit process. There is a provision for for sale units. I, we, we do think it's less likely to see the for sale units. In this case, if you see the for sale units, it's probably in a condominium type style project rather than seeing individual detached single-family homes. Adaptive reuse may not be single-use residential, may not be a single-use residential project. We've definitely seen adaptive reuse that's We've definitely seen Adaptive Reuse that's mixed use in our community. So there, a lot of times, these older hotels, motels are accompanied with a restaurant. And so that's allowed, we've allowed to see these, these mixed use projects go on. So same benefit, except there's more. So we get rid of the conditional use permit if it's in a, in a commercial zone. But additionally, on top of it, if the building is at least 15 years of age, and the additions are not exceeding 25% of the existing building, so it does allow for some slight modification, then the projects are not required to provide additional parking. They're not required to meet the site planning design standards. They're not required to meet landscaping. They're not required to provide common open space. And they're not required to comply with architectural design standards, mostly because it's pretty impossible to go back when you have an existing building form and reapply these new standards. For non-residential adaptive use, we've done a lot for housing. We haven't done a lot for commercial as of late. So let me explain the dilemma here. The downtown, most of this historic downtown that's north of the tracks is in a, is in a zoning district called the Central Business District. In that zoning district, if you change your land use, if you go from retail to restaurant, you do not have to fiddle around with parking. It's not a requirement. It's only if you were to tear down a building and rebuild that the parking would come into play and trigger. The same, and which works really well in a historic downtown, when you have lots of businesses that have no parking at all. The same is not true south of the tracks. Those businesses on the south side that are also historic, have no parking, each individually go through a process of attaining a variance anytime they want to change their land use, which can become very problematic. This incentive, this parking reduction is meant to apply to commercial buildings that are already within our community. It would go much farther beyond even just south side, it would be across the city. So if you think Sunnyside neighborhoods, south side, Plaza Vieja neighborhoods, where we already have like sort of these smaller commercial buildings, as they transition through uses, they would not be required to upgrade their parking to whatever that new use allows. This will allow these commercial buildings to have new life, to have more robust. This incentive or this reduction, it's not really an incentive, this reduction is meant to apply to non-residential uses, but could also apply to mixed use. Again, size limitation here, 5,000 square feet. So we're not looking at a big giant or a lot of residential units. And there can't be a proposed addition of more than 50%. So we've also looked at, at least, there at least being some form of on-street parking available within that quarter-mile distance, which we know is a comfortable distance to walk. That is the sum total of what is in this text amendment. Like I said, the incentives are really this just introductory step into looking at resident or allowing or being more flexible for with residential uses in the commercial zone. We hope to have a lot more to come in the future as we finalize that cap process. So the findings, the regional plan obviously supports Adaptive Reuse. The greenest building in our community is a building that already exists. So everything we can do to keep that existing stock of buildings, we've also become familiar with them. And they're, they're part of our framework of what our community actually looks like. And most people are really happy when they see something invigorated and used in a new and different way. And so that's the goal here, is to see that fabric of what we think of as Flagstaff be able to remain and make it easier for the uses to change in these buildings. More goals and policies, and I'll talk about Adaptive Reuse and the so forth. The Tenure Housing Plan, of course, obviously has tons of goals and policies that have support incentives for the creation of affordable housing. It also encourages the Adaptive Reuse of buildings. And lastly, Carbon Neutrality Plan, just creating housing options for households at all income levels, which is what this can help do. The proposed amendment is intended to enhance public health and safety by incentivizing the contribution of affordable housing units and also keeping existing buildings within our, within our community. And lastly, the amendment is internally consistent with other applicable provisions of the code. Staff is recommending approval in accordance with the findings, and if you should have any question, be happy to answer them.
Are, are there currently any questions for Tiffany? Thank you, Tiffany, for that great presentation. Commissioner Norton.
Thanks for the presentation, because that cleared up some confusions that I had left over from our work session, session on this. So I understand being able to remove the CUP process in a lot of these instances. The one that caught my eye, that raised a flag for me, was if something, if a building is classified or triggers high occupancy housing, if it's affordable, 100% affordable, it also removes the CUP. Is that, is that a new, that's a new one?
Nope.
Can you speak to that a little bit more?
Sure.
I'm worried about chipping away at the HOH.
So that high occupancy housing exemption was, already existed. It was actually a last-minute add at the council meeting. It was a request. And so it ended up weirdly in the definition, it got added into the definitions of the zoning code, not where you would normally call out an exemption. And so all's I'm simply doing is moving it out of the definitions and putting it into the section of code where it belongs, which is the Affordable Housing Incentive section of the code. But it was adopted back in 2022. So it exists whether we move it or not.
So we'll still have, well, I know we're going to get to the part about HOH later in, in the next agenda item, but we will still have, oh no, I guess we're removing that. You know what, I'll save my comment for the next agenda item on that one. Thanks for the clarification.
I have a surprise for you on HOH too, so. Is there any other questions on this?
Commissioner Lukey?
I, I'm sure you've told us this before, but what was the feedback from Sunnyside and South Side community groups about it?
I have not received any specific feedback from either.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I, I had two questions. Commissioner Norton kind of asked my question. My concern was potentially developers could get around scrutiny by going down this route, but that doesn't sound like that's the case. The other question I have is on enforceability. So if, if you have to have this affordable housing, like 60%, you know, statute or threshold, how do you maintain that? How do you enforce that? Who's going to be doing that 10 years from now? How are you telling somebody, okay, you can no longer live, you're trying to dwindle down the numbers?
Sure. And I'm not sure I'm seeing housing out there.
Jen, come on, Jen. Hi, everyone, I was way in the back. All right, I'm Jennifer Michelson, Housing Planning Manager with the Housing Department. So someone, especially if someone is going to be taking advantage of any of our bond programming, our bond funds, there are, it's a loan document essentially that they're going to enter into with the city, that will come with lots of reporting requirements and, and strings attached to that funding. So we'd be tracking them that way.
But how do you guarantee the affordable?
That they would be, that they would exist? Or like if a tenant moves out, that they wouldn't? We have reporting requirements. So they would have to report to us, like, you committed to, you know, 25 affordable units. They would be sending us annual reports with the tenant income information for each of those, those units. So that's part, the reporting is part of our, our department activities.
Okay, I, I guess there's always long-term problems that come, you know, unintended consequences. And, and my concern is, you're asking people to report their incomes now, you're preventing people from taking raises. There's all these problems that could occur down the road. I don't know, I just, I worry about how you enforce this.
One of our implementation strategies we've learned over time is to require a lower, so the, the threshold is an 80% area median income limit on, upon signing a lease at one of these affordable units. But over time, if that tenant, you know, two years later, they're earning over 80% AMI, like, we've allowed for that, that increase in income over time, but we do cut it off at 100% of the area median income. So we have acknowledged there's some wiggle room, we acknowledge people earn a little bit more over the years. And so we do allow that, there's like a little, like a 20% range where they can go over that initial income limit if they are existing tenants. And the 100% AMI is the limit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. That was informative. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Marr?
Thank you, Chair. Could you explain a little bit about the rationale of benchmarking that the building needs to be 15 years of age? 15 years seems fairly new to me.
Uh, 15 years could be relatively new. So if you think about how old are, we've had zoning in place. The idea of having a timeframe benchmark, and I've reviewed a lot of different Adaptive Reuse codes, they average anywhere between 15 and 25. Because this had to do with affordable housing, we went with the lower realm. But the idea is, is that you wouldn't come in and build a building brand new and not meet standards on purpose to just turn around immediately and turn it into housing. Not that I would ever honestly expect that to ever happen anyway. So if it's an uncomfortable place, we can rethink that basic standard, or we can up it if necessary as well. I always try to put some level of guardrails to make it feel more comfortable.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Are there any comments from the general public at this time? Does anybody have comment cards? Anybody have comments? Anybody online? Thank you. So hearing none, I am ready for a motion?
Okay, I'll go for it. In accordance with the findings, we make a recommendation to the City Council for approval of the zoning code text amendment, PZ 2500041, Single Use Residential and Adaptive Reuse Incentives.
Alex?
And the findings.
And in accordance with the findings?
In accordance with the findings.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
So Commissioner Lukey made the motion, and Commissioner Shihi seconded the motion. Is there any other discussion by commissioners? Discussion? Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Tiffany, and we'll be hearing you again on item E, PZ 2500028, High Occupancy Housing Update.
I'm gonna, before I dig into this, and I'm happy to abbreviate this one as well, before I dig into this, the last thing we discussed two weeks ago was about the conditional use permit for single-family high occupancy housing. There was a general consensus that yes, maybe we could look at removing that standard. Always talking about unintended consequences, working on the next amendment, which is middle housing, a little snafu came into place. And that is, is that with the middle housing bill, everything, any development up to four units has to be treated the same as single-family. So I'm going to be coming back to you with two proposals on middle housing of how we can work with the high occupancy housing framework. I am finalizing that work with our attorneys right now and have that draft internally circulating. So what I would request tonight is, is that we leave the single-family high occupancy housing alone at this point and not include it in this amendment. So I know I gave you two drafts. We would move, my request tonight is only on the draft that keeps in the conditional use permit at this point in time. Sort of an important little maneuvering step we need to take in terms of where we go for middle housing. That sounds really covert. It's not. It's just, there'll be two options in the future on how we want to treat that. And that is whether we remove the conditional use permit for high occupancy housing on four units and below, or whether we combine them all into one land use. So, I mean, it's going to be a change either way, but it, it'll, it'll look and feel different. There's also a different potential, what I've noticed about all of these, this kind of actually just hit me when I was sitting here listening to those cases, as almost every single one of those cases hit the definition because of the bathrooms, not because they went over the bedrooms. Though it could also be a simple change from an or to an and, like we've done on other definitions, that you have to go over both in order to be high occupancy housing. So there's a couple different options I think we can work through, but would like this amendment to go forward as is, and we'll come back and regroup in middle housing, which will be back before you in about a month. Okay. So with that being said, I, you know, we went through a lot of this in pretty heavy detail two weeks ago, so I'm not going to go back over the history. You know, this amendment is happening because the regional plan, the draft regional plan does alter land use categories. And so we definitely need to detach the code from those land use categories. It's, it's really a good thing, whether the regional plan is changing or not changing, it's never really good to, to adopt a code where it is completely reliant on a policy-based document anyway. It's good for code to rely on code, if that makes sense. We are changing the density tables. We're simplifying them, going just to one minimum and one maximum for each zoning category. So regardless of resource protection overlay, regardless if you're in an activity center, but does that really fundamentally change anything? It doesn't. You know, if I could express to every developer along the way, just because your property's, like, just because it says you can have 29 units an acre, doesn't mean you can, your land's actually going to give you 29 units an acre, but hey, we all live and learn. All right, I had given you this example of Aspen Place being in an activity center and how it had no resources, but it was held to a lower density. The provisions that are based on the regional plan have to do with where you can even apply for a conditional use permit. So certainly, there will be a lot more opportunity for developments to at least apply for the conditional use permit. The good thing to know is, is that there is a whole high occupancy housing plan out there. We are now requiring a conformance analysis with the high occupancy housing plan and any other specific or neighborhood plan as well, in addition to the general plan. Again, just all, changing all of those dynamics about the, the largest of the largest high occupancy housing projects were limited to regional activity centers. We won't have that designation of regional anymore. So it's really opening it up to more places being able to apply for that conditional use permit. But again, there, there is a policy-based document that indicates where those higher-density projects you would find and be, where they would be located. We are changing the, the aspect of the center line of a street classified as a commercial corridor, and we're going to rely more on our standard classifications of collector and arterial rather than what's maybe considered a commercial corridor, because it, it's a little confusing. And then there's footprint calibrations that needed to happen. So these footprints were all based on being in a historic activity center. Again, we won't have the historic activity center anymore, so we're relying that on our historic overlay zones as being the primary caveat for those determinations. It updates the densities, which we talked about. We'll also have to do the same for that bedroom density calculation. We'll also have to do the same for that bedroom density calculation. The calculations, the density levels are not changing. It's just one, one maximum instead of variations based on activity centers. And the big, this is a substantive change. This is the one substantive change that is not relative to the changes in the regional plan. And that is a small modification to the definition that could have a substantial benefit to projects in the transect zone. So we haven't seen a lot of transect zone projects. They don't measure density in the same way that density is measured in the conventional code. And so by putting this and instead of an or, you have to hit both triggers in order to require that conditional use permit. So, you know, a project that's 60 units an acre, but is also all one bedroom, and so 60 bedrooms an acre, it wouldn't trigger HOH. And it removes the, we are removing the requirement to provide alternative floor plans when somebody does come in for an HOH conditional use permit. You know, it's a fairly substantial cost in making somebody essentially designed to build separate buildings. It also removes the requirement for an HOH project to be located within the activity center, removes the limitations on the size in different activity centers, requires conformance analysis with the regional plan and any applicable specific plan for an HOHCUP. I spent a lot of time with Sarah looking at the HOH plan and looking at a lot of the neighborhood plans, the areas that have been more, more sensitive to these larger mixed use, the larger mixed use, high occupancy housing projects, not the single family, but the, the larger projects. And those are the ones that are generally have really good, robust policies about where development is appropriate, appropriate at that large or high dense of a scale. So we feel fairly confident that by adding this provision and this conformance analysis, that that will give the commission the leeway it needs when reviewing these CUPs in the future. And then replaces that footprint limitation, removes the limitation on the size, I keep repeating myself, and then updates the waste management, the crime-free multi-housing requirements, and then modifies the location for mixed use as well on that arterial. So findings for the, the regional plan does include policies specifically about large-scale mixed use. So there were a whole series of policies that were added. These are them. These are the policies that were added to the regional plan as part of the adoption of the high occupancy housing plan. So these are really meant to, and you can see, every single one of them is really going to be about mixed use. For the most part, at the, that timeframe, that was the focus of high occupancy housing were, were the, the large-scale mixed use projects. The biggest one you'll see is, is that mixed use developments over 50 units an acre should be located in a regional-scale activity center. This will remain in play up until a new regional plan is adopted. So if a conditional use permit were to come in before the adoption of the new regional plan, we would look for conformance with this particular policy until such time this policy is changed. That was the one policy I was most concerned about in the adoption of this, and I think we worked through a good solution. The goals and policies of the high occupancy housing plan are here. None of the proposed changes are in opposition to the existing goals of the high occupancy housing plan. And then the 10-year housing plan, of course, supporting all housing types and carbon neutrality plan provisions. The proposed amendment is intended to address upcoming changes with land use categories in the regional plan that the zoning code depends on for implementation. The proposed amendment will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare. And the amendment is internally consistent with existing zoning code following its format, and staff is recommending approval. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Is there, are there any questions? Commissioner Norton?
My first question goes back to how you started talking about this with regard to the single family. And I had thought about that after our work session as well, and I wondered, because you had mentioned Prop 207 claims at the time. So when HOH was put into effect, did you have Prop 207 claims on properties that would have been affected by the single family?
The majority of the Prop 207 claims are single-family residential.
Okay. So the caveat, I would think, is if we remove the requirement for CUP, and then what if we have some unintended consequences and that gets put back in, and it just opens up another raft or opportunity window for more 207 claims?
That's always, yes. I mean, that's, that's an issue, I think, with any code amendment that we face is, you know, if we were to undo it, then, and we decided later on we wanted to go back, but there are other components. So that is not the only aspect of that zoning code. That zoning code amendment was fairly significant. And so, and included a broad brush. So, I mean, those Prop 207, they're just gonna stay on the books.
They were just exemptions. There was no payout on anything.
No.
Okay. I guess that would be, my input would be, leave it as it is, you know? My second question is, again, about the removing the CUP if, if an HOH building is 100% affordable. Is that a new policy put into this?
No. That is an existing exemption that was put in at the time of the original adoption of the high occupancy housing text amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Any discussion or questions from the public? Nothing online? All right. Then is there a motion for this? For?
Senator Chair?
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission, in accordance with the findings in this report, make a recommendation to the City Council for approval of the city code text amendment, PZ 25-00028, high occupancy housing.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Marr has seconded the motion and Commissioner Shihi made the motion. Any other discussion on the motion? Any other discussion? Discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tiffany. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, and I just want to say hi to the velvet hammer online.
Okay. Then we're going to move on to item six, general business, what most people are here for. A, discussion of the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan of 2045. And Sarah Hall, refer to you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Sarah Decter. I'm the comprehensive neighborhood planning manager for Flagstaff. This is the citizen review session for the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan, which we are updating for 2045. This is the, if we think of like our ready, set, go in emergency management, this meeting is the set meeting. We're not at go yet. That's what starts on September 10th, when we begin the public hearings. But the purpose of the citizen review session is really to engage in some discussion and answer questions and make sure that the roadmap for the process is clear. On my part, you're going to hear I sound a little gravelly, and I know other people will be using this mic, so I'll just assure them I am not sick. It is just that my, I call it my photosynthetic nemesis is high on, on the top of the charts right now, and I'm really having a lot of allergy issues. So if I step away to cough or get a drink of water, I hope you'll bear with me. For, I know there are a lot of new faces. When I look around the room, I see some people who've participated in the regional plan update, which has been going on for years. But I also see some, some folks who maybe are, got one of the postcards in the mail and are here to learn. So I want to go over some things I know the commission may already be familiar with, remembering that some people listening or, or joining us for the first time are trying to catch up at the very phase four of a four-phase process. So we'll start by just going over the basics of what the regional plan is and is not, go through an overview of our process in developing the plan, the document and purpose and its organization, things that have changed since the 60-day public review, which began in October and then ended in December. And we've made a lot of changes because we received over 2,000 public comments. So a great turnout in that 60-day review, which gave us a lot of work to do. So we didn't turn it around in four weeks. That would not have been very, I don't feel that would have been very reflective of our respect for the amount of comments and time people put into it. And then we'll talk about the resources we will have for the commission and council and the public as we work through the public hearings. So the regional plan is our policy guide. So I want to contrast that with the things that Tiffany Antal was up here talking about, which are the code. It is not code. And there's often confusion about that because it talks about a lot of the same things as the code. But as Tiffany showed you recently, it was great to follow her on that. The reason is, is because the code updates we will see for the next 15 years will be based on the conformance with this document. So Tiffany's future work program is dependent that we write this in a way that helps move all those really critical initiatives forward in how land use, growth, housing, transportation, business management, climate action, natural resources, and so much more is completed in our community. For, this plan was developed jointly with Coconino County, and so we'll talk a little bit about that. But for the purpose of the citizen review session and the public hearings, what we're really talking about is that this is the general plan for the city and its role in that. There are a lot of things that are in the plan, and I'll point them out if we are talking about any of them, that are really for the county or written in a certain way because we wanted to, as often as possible, come up with shared language for these policies. Coconino County is in the process of adopting their comprehensive plan. This plan will be an amendment to that document. So they're going to adopt their comprehensive plan first and then come back and adopt the regional plan. That process will actually be coincident with some of our hearings, and so we'll talk a little bit about that in the overall timeline. So the Flagstaff region, as you can see from this map, is larger than just the city itself. It takes into account some communities that where many people live and work in Flagstaff, or they may have been, have jobs or school here, but they really are living in Coconino County and Ford Valley and Belmont, Timberline, Fernwood, Doni Park, and Kachina Village. The reason the Flagstaff region is designed this way is this is also our Metropolitan Planning Organization boundary, MetroPlan. And so our federal funding for transportation projects, which gets prioritized because we're a big enough metropolitan area to have an MPO, are also in this area. So that helps us stay coordinated with a lot of other agency-level decisions. I want to do a quick demo of the document because I want to make sure everybody can find it. I want to make sure people can see where it is and how it can be used. Well, this is just the city website, so I don't know why that wouldn't come up. Just to be fun. There we go. So the first thing I do when I arrive at the city website is you might go scroll down and look here for things that are going on in the city. The regional plan hearings are here on the website, but what you can do if you're using your browser or your phone is type in regionalplan2045, which I'm doing a poor job of right now, and this short URL takes you to the project website. It says right here, here, you can read the public hearing draft. So this is how you access this document. There is the document. There is an executive summary in English and Spanish. And then there is an interactive web map that, where you can see all these maps and all the versions of it. And then this week, Elsa, at the request of some participants, added PDFs of all the maps within the plan. Someone at the Open Space meeting on Monday told me, I just want to look at the pictures. I'm okay with that. It's fine. Some people are going to open this document and just look at the maps. The text is really important. We're probably going to spend just as much time talking about the text with it, but the maps being easily accessible so we can pull them up and understand them is important. So this is what's available online in your meeting agendas, and also your meeting videos are going to be posted here so people can follow along with the process. So we hope this makes everything very easy. And I'm demonstrating this because if you look at this circle up here, this document is 500 megabytes. So if you click it on your phone or your tablet and it's slow or you get a 404 error, it may be because you don't have space. It's a very large document. And that was at the request of its usability and accessibility for the community. The current plan, I heard many, many, many times, was not very accessible. It was really written in a way to be a print document, where this document is more like a webpage. It had, there are pages that have 20 or 30 hyperlinks on them. So you can read it or you can just navigate around it to find the information you're looking for. To do that, it creates a lot of extra data, so it's not a flat document. So this is important. You can see, it's going to take time to download, and you've got to be patient. 360 downloads have already occurred, so we are seeing that there is a lot of traffic of people opening it and trying to get an understanding of it. But we also can encourage people, they can look for both the English executive summary and the Spanish one. The postcard was also provided with a little blurb that said, go on the website and you can find our postcard in Spanish. That is also on the website and available. I'll go back to the demo in just a second. But the plan, it's important to talk about what the plan is, and then I'll go back and we'll look at it and what it does a little bit, too. We had a very simplified planning pyramid in the current plan, and we made it a little more three-dimensional, and we tried to talk more about the fact that the plan has two purposes. It has a very legally specific purpose in development review, which we will talk about in the hearings, which is that finding of conformance. But then it also provides some tools and visioning that help us do utility master planning, plan for housing, plan for, you know, neighborhoods, and also we, they can be used in our capital improvement planning and budgeting. So it's not that it's without those uses, but it is very important that the plan achieve and be implementable on the side that pertains to development review. Let's see if that downloaded by now. Oh, it's super close. But you can see, I wanted to demonstrate. This takes a while because we got a lot of phone calls this week. People were like, I can't download it. We're like, you just have to like, stop clicking the button. I think we've all been there. So when you open this up, and it says, it's the web accessible version, the page numbers in it are done by chapter, and that is specific. And we did receive comments that people don't like that, but I'll tell you, I won't recommend changing it. And the reason is, this is a living document. It is going to be changed over time for 10 years. It'll go to the voters, the voters will ratify it. The current plan, we amended it over four, over 30 times. We probably will keep amending it for a few more months before it is at rest, followed by this plan. So it's really important that people recognize this is a big document. If I made it a continuous pagination, every time we had to add a page in chapter four, I would have to reprint the document for all pages. That's not actually manageable, and it creates huge problems when we're trying to amend the document. So that's just the way it has to be. But as you can see, I'll start to get down to where some of the material is. The, the table of contents is clickable. It takes you to all these different pages. If you take the time to open this up in like an Acrobat, you can also put these eight dash one pages up here. It doesn't do that in a browser. That's a little bit of a difference. I thought it would do it in a browser, but it doesn't. And this will let you move around the document pretty easily. In addition, it's a little slow today. You can see that a lot of words have hyperlinks, and these take you to the glossary so that you can clearly see how these terms are defined. Some of the terms are going to be really easy. People will say, I know what open space is. I may not feel they know what nature-based infrastructure is. But we have a specific meaning. There's a reason we chose those words. On Monday, I was at the Open Space Commission talking with them about the plan, and they really questioned the term significant natural resources. So when I click on that, you'll see that these are described in a certain way, and then I also showed them- see that these are described in a certain way. And then I also showed them in the Arizona Revised Statute, where it says, we have to talk about significant natural resources, not just natural resources, period. So it is important that when people are using the document, that they are looking around and not just going to Page One, Two, and Chapters One, Two, and Three, and then stopping. That was a lot of my comments for the commission last night, was, it seems like you didn't read into Chapter Four. And what I will say is Chapters One, Two, Three, and Four are really written for the development side of the triangle. So they are written to support this half of the triangle. And then Chapters Five through Eleven, they help the whole thing, but they are more written to the visioning and strategic side of the triangle. So hopefully, that helps. Two, Three, Four especially, read it like you're thinking about development review. Five through 11, read it like you're thinking, what would this tell me to do in a budget process, or what to put on a capital improvement plan, or what grants to apply for. So that was something that the public comment really said, people didn't like it mixed together. They had a hard time understanding it. I think people have a hard time understanding the development review side of things, period. And I'm not sure that's something a single document could overcome, even if it were 10,000 pages. It's a complicated process. So how did we get here? How did we develop these? It says 250 pages, but it's a lot of graphics. It's really about 200 pages of text about what we expect the community to do in terms of development for the next 20 years. It was a four-phase process, and we are near the end of that process now. There's really a few more steps to go. We spent a whole year or two just talking to people and listening in a very open-ended way. And we had the great contributions you saw from the cover and other things that that's not art we paid some famous artists to do. That's community art that was created at these listening events. Sometimes we were in a park. Sometimes we were at a school. The Flagstaff High School and Coconino High School Native American Clubs were very active and involved in all these phases of this process and really contributed a lot to ideas within the plan as well. So we were able to do youth engagement, education, all kinds of things in Phase One. Our real goal was to be as curious as possible and to share what we knew and hear what the community knew about the future. Then we went through a scenario planning-based process in Phase Two, and collaborative work with the community members, trying to get people to the table to really understand. That included some gamification of our future growth and development. In Phase Three, and excuse me while I take a sip of water. The City Council made recommendations to the city manager and the county manager on people they wanted to include in an advisory committee. And we had the Regional Plan Committee meet. They had a very effective 15 meetings. Most of them happened in an eight-month period. They reviewed the plan, chapter by chapter, ahead of the 60-day public review. And then they were reconvened in March, when we had public comments, and we brought them back, the complicated things, or the things that were really, we didn't know what to do with the comments. We needed their feedback. A good example was, there were a lot of opinions about the vision statement. Loved it, hated it, wanted it different. And I mean, I think that's common for a vision statement. That vision statement had been based on pulling together visioning workshops that had happened earlier in the process. We shared all those comments with the committee. The committee looked at them and said, we're fine with the vision statement we came up with the first time. And that's not a that's not a call staff would have made very easily. I think we would have gone back to the drawing board and maybe created some alternatives. So the committee was really essential in getting to some of those seemingly complex decisions and just getting down to like, we've been at the table with you for 12 months, and we've been through these conversations, and we can help you cut to the chase. And they really did a great job of that. We also had a pretty lengthy legal review, if you think about that development review side of the process, where staff and the legal department went through scenarios. We're like, what if someone brings us this? And what if we have this kind of application? And have we really thought through all those unintended consequences? And we kept revising and revising things that we felt could influence, could be written in a way that could get misconstrued in the future, and really tried to tighten them down. So that's a lot of what happened in Phase Three. And then in Phase Four, which we're at now, you are in the process of making a recommendation to council, starting on September 10, and taking in the public comment. And then also, council will have a special meeting to hear the plan and hopefully send it to a ballot in the spring. So I said the community in Phase One and Two had a lot of ways to participate. And I just wanted to put up a slide here on the many, many different ways. There was weekly webinars for over six months. There were visioning workshops all over the community. There was a technical advisory group that was convened. We have 13 Face the Future workshops, which were the gamified workshops that we base scenario planning on. We had two online surveys and open houses. And then we had several other open houses throughout the process. So we've been, there have been at least 800 people who've showed up to all of these things, not counting the committee. And then that's given us a really strong basis that as we are doing the technical work, we're also hearing from people all on the way. You can see, these are very regular meetings. One of the key things that I think concerns the community, and it's different this time from other plans, is that our growth projections, for the first time in 50 years, are not all rosy. So the prior to the 2020 census, when you saw this graph, which is a prettier version of the graph, you can find on the Office of Economic Opportunities website, where they have spreadsheets that show this data, their projection data, it would be grow a little, grow medium, grow a lot. That's not the future this plan is written for. This plan is written for the, we start to flatten and decline our growth, or we see some modest growth, or things change. There's a lot of things that could change in the next 20 years, and growth takes off. In all of these scenarios, migration is the biggest factor of uncertainty. And that is not a particular part that the plan can control, but the plan can be responsive and prepared for all three scenarios, which is why we talk about scenario planning and not about certainty in terms of the plan's future. This process had multiple iterations and rounds of feedback. For Flagstaff folks, I think of it like a stack-looped trail. Every time we went back on the trail, we could do a short little loop. We could do a longer loop. We could take a different one. And we did that over and over again through this process, trying to make sure that our visioning and our look at trade-offs, and this, the choosing of how we would actually want to proceed in situations where there are trade-offs, all included the community. And you can see, every time we took one of these steps, we made an effort to grow engagement. We also then, on the city side, really had to look at all our existing plans. Some of these plans will be revised in the next five years. And so this plan not only had to pull together what they said now, but also prepare for what challenges, the rewrites of things like the carbon neutrality plan, or the water services plan might be faced with as they are revising those documents. So the Regional Plan Committee endorsed a draft plan for public hearing, or for public comment on September 30. They had, that doesn't mean that they have all looked at this plan and endorsed it. They, their role was really to get a document out to the public that they felt could generate comments. That's what they were tasked with. The last, that can be confusing, if people remember the 2012 to 2014 effort, because we have this giant 27-person standing committee that met forever and ever and ever, and also constantly had quorum issues, and never, and made very slow, difficult process. This was meant to be a nimble, quick group that had a clear job. And hopefully, all of those people still have a chance to participate now, too. And they are. We're hearing from them, trust me. That 60-day review, as I said, generated over 2,000 comments. One of the reasons it did is a tool that Coconino County has, which is called Conveo, where we uploaded the whole draft document, and people could put bubbles down anywhere they wanted. They could also, there's sometimes you'll see in the comments that you'll get for the meeting on the 10th, people were responding to each other's comments. Still, the, what I learned, we learned a lot from just reading the comments. One of the groups I'll talk about is, is, there were definitely people who look at this and think, too long, didn't read. And that summed up, you'll see, there's a comment that specifically says, I haven't read the plan, but, and then proceeded to provide comments. So I realized that this will be, it's really important what the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to be doing in the hearings, and that we daylight the things that people should pay attention to. Because that question will come up again when people have to read it to vote on it. Are people going to be motivated to actually take the time to read it, to read the summaries, and then vote on it on a ballot? That's why we tend to do it as a standalone mail-in ballot. But this is an important part of the process for the hearings, because we want to make sure the TLDR people hear what they need to hear and understand the document. I don't mean that in a disrespectful way. Just I learned, the first five pages had 10 times the comments of any other page. There's a, there's an absolute curve, like we were watching YouTube video. So this is what the split out of public comments during the 60-day public review. You can see, two-thirds of this graph were on plan clarity. That's why the plan looks so different from the previous iteration, because there was a lot of comments on plan clarity. Not as many on all the comment issues. But then you can see, natural resources, climate action, food systems, equity, some of these newer topics or more rethought topics on the plan got a lot of feedback, as well as growth and housing. So we saw a good amount of comments. Staff provided a lot of comments during the 60-day public review. 20% of the 2,500 comments were from internally, us retesting it and continuing to kick the tires and make sure that this was a workable plan. Because we hadn't looked at it all the time, in the same timeframe before. So our key suggestions from the public was, we had to improve both the readability and clarity of the document. There was an incredible amount of comments on the importance of making sure the carbon neutrality's role in the development of the plan was clearer, that the density impacts on character needed more clarity and a better understanding of how density was calculated, which we spent a lot of time talking about in the last six months, that our balance of land uses was well-calibrated, which the scenario planning helped with, but also, these comments helped us go a little further in refining that. And then there was a lot of support for some of the ideas in the plan, like more flexibility on parking, and especially winter parking, reducing minimums, and better manage of parking was, was really, got more support than I think we anticipated. Oops, sorry. So then, the key map in this document, I talked about how we put all the maps online, and this is the beating heart of the document, is the Future Growth Illustration. It is the first place a planner goes when something is proposed. When someone comes to a pre-application meeting, or to the counter, or they submit a first concept plan, we say, is what's being proposed part what's allowed or encouraged by the Future Growth Illustration? So the changes to this that were really key are, we consolidated suburban neighborhood. The draft plan had a medium and high-density suburban neighborhood. We just created one, went back to one category. That was kind of a test, and it didn't, people did not, it didn't improve people's understanding of suburban neighborhoods or what they wanted. We also clarified that some of these suburban neighborhoods have corridors in them, and you can see kind of these light road networks in the background. Those are corridors. The idea of a corridor in the plan is that it's a big enough road to have commercial frontage. And we want to make sure that those have commercial frontage, because that supports our tax base. It's a good use of that right away. We don't want large commercial uses tucked back all the time into areas that don't have good access. And also means we can shorten the distance people have to go for their daily needs. So that's really critical. We also made some changes in the John Wesley Powell area. Michelle McNulty, our planning director, is concurrent with this process, been in a lot of discussion and negotiations to get John Wesley Powell built, to work with the property owners in helping them develop their future plans, and then to create a John Wesley Powell area plan, which might be the first area plan we adopt under the new plan, or maybe a little before the new plan, depending on how the project timing goes, to talk about what's going to happen to the properties that are not owned by larger property owners who've submitted applications. We also made some changes within the South Side. The South Side plan, and this plan, we thought we had matched them well, but people found some ways that we needed to clarify that. So we cleaned that up. We made some employment districts residential, because there were many people who felt that the amount of employment, given the housing emergency, was overstated. And we did not do that for the site near Fort Tuthill, that was the proposed hospital, because there is a specific plan that is still valid and on the books for that property that identifies it as an employment area. So we did, if we had changed that, we would, we haven't rescinded that specific plan. So we would be creating a conflict on day one. So we left it as employment, since there is an adopted specific plan for that area. Milton and Woodlands Village, we expanded the urban center down Milton Road to University. So now, everything north of University and east of Woodlands Village is described as an urban area. That could be very helpful in the future, when some of those big shopping centers might need to be broken up, or might be sold or demolished. It would let us get more street grid in that area and more of an urban feel. It's pretty close to downtown in our historic neighborhoods. That was a suggestion that came from the public, and we thought was a good one. And then the other thing you'll notice, and this is really a legal issue, is we added some of these symbols for existing mines on the map. And that is simply because that's a very odd statutory requirement. And we just felt this was the best place to address it. It was just so everyone can see where they are. Other comments that we incorporated were, we had tried to test, and we've gone back and forth with the committee about this, too, how flexible or inflexible the urban growth boundary should be. In the current plan, it's pretty clear that if you want to do an expansion of water and sewer outside the urban growth boundary, it says you shall always have to do a major plan amendment. For small property owners who might be very close to the city limits and are having a well dry up, or having other issues getting wells established on their property, that's a really big burden. It's kept some smaller property owners in need of water services from joining the system. So we tried to create some flexibility, and that got a very strong reaction, that people did not want us to be that flexible. So we made it less flexible. It's pretty comparable to the way it's currently written in the plan, but there's, we'll go over that a little at the hearings. We also talked about, a lot about whether we needed to really increase all housing in the community, or only attainable and affordable housing. And as you all know, it's hard to just increase a segment of our housing from an income point of view, since we cannot require inclusionary zoning in Arizona, because the state preempted us on that. They've also preempted us on managing short-term rentals and many other affordable housing issues that are definitely at play in the housing emergency, but we cannot regulate. So we went back into the plan and made some adjustments to the language. But then we also went back through and put in kind of a placeholder policy, which you'll see under Development Patterns, that says, we want to stay on top of opportunities that might come up if the legislation changes. So basically, we, we put in a placeholder, because if we, if the cities of Arizona are successfully in lobbying for more flexibility on those things, we wouldn't want any language in the plan to stand in the way of that. Many comments talked about the importance of native plants and flora and fauna in the region, expanding our transit service and uses, and ADA accessibility of both the document and our urban environment. So internally, we really grappled with, how do we determine plan conformance? Because, right, we're talking about that right side of the triangle, development reviews, triangle. You, as the commission for planning and zoning, are our partners in grappling with hard decisions in that space. People, our assumption going into the 60-day public review is, we weren't going to make a lot of changes to the how. And we have ended up kind of going in a different direction. We not only discussed that a little at the May 2 joint retreat that you all were at, but we actually had a follow-up discussion with just City Council, and went back to them and said, what do we need to do here? And what can we accomplish? We proposed an idea. They said, OK, keep going. And so we kept going. So we'll talk about that in the hearings, too. Development patterns and goals that we wrote for the 60-day review were 100% revised. They just didn't land. They needed a big rewrite. They just didn't land, they needed a big rewrite. And it's important particularly that those be applicable. And then transportation-related maps were reviewed, because we had some recent development plans submitted that had found some more technical issues that we'd need to overcome for the road network, and the bike network, and the trail network, and we, we were incorporating those. We also identified a few conflicting, unintentionally conflicting policies and reconciled them. So, the process for that was, we analyzed and incorporated as many comments as we could. Staff tested a lot of the outcomes of the plan when we first revised it, and we got the committee feedback on things that were complicated and needed their input. We had an additional online survey, because one of the things we felt we didn't have the right information on were discussions of density and character. And then we proposed the retreat, how we wanted to manage that part of the plan. And we completed a legal review, and we also had that additional June 24 work session with Council to talk about findings of conformance much more clearly. And after all that, I want to bring us back to some guidance we've had and put in front of you a bunch of times. When we started this, before I had ever written the plan, or any part of the plan, or anyone in my team had written a sentence, we discussed what are the critical success factors for this new plan. This is not in the statute, no one's going to hold us accountable legally for these, but these are what we tried as a team to hold ourselves accountable for. And the top one there is that it is feasible and implementable. So, that doesn't mean we don't make bold statements about our future. It does mean that we make sure we really believe we can achieve those bold statements, and that we have a path in the way that this document is applied to make those things happen. One of the disappointments of the Flagstaff Regional Plan 2030 was that it had, I created beautiful annual reports. The former Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission kept praising our staff for creating the best annual report she'd ever seen, Commissioner Wheeler. And she'd been a Planning Director for decades. But you know what they told us year after year was, no progress was being made. So was that annual report where our efforts should have gone? Or should we have been making progress? And I remembered that every day of working on this document, that it might have felt good to make a pretty report, but it didn't make much of a difference. And so we really have sculpted the plan to try and make a difference on the things the community told us they care about. Which is why this has to reflect community values and be as concise as possible. It is a long document, because it is a complicated document, but we tried to make it concise and clear. And that's part of why we put all the Development Review material in Chapters 2, 3, and 4. So if that was your purpose in opening the document, you could really find what you needed, without flipping through a bunch of things that were less relevant to you. We also wanted to set clear priorities, which I feel like we have in the plan. We've actually redesigned it to be organized by priorities. The current plan has no priorities, and a ton of conflicting priorities. I hope we're able to, at the end of this process, feel we've achieved this one in particular. We also spent a lot of time making sure cultural perspectives were broadly reached out for, and that the community, our indigenous community was included as much as we could reach out and get, get interest in the process. We also wanted to make sure we had critical thinking about vulnerabilities, uncertainties, and complexities. We've already talked about some of that, but there's many, many layers of that all through the document. We also wanted to make sure we incorporated area plans, which, like we said, we thought we hit the South Side okay, but we felt like we didn't, and so we revised. And then we also wanted to clarify activity centers and how they'll be achieved. Activity centers are an idea that's been in our plan since 1990. The first two plans never told you what it was, but they said, it's out there somewhere and you'll find it. And then the 2014 plan said, you might find it around here. And they have the bubble map, as we call that Future Growth Illustration colloquially. But this plan, we really wanted to say, here they are, here's what it means, and make sure it's really clear and easy to incorporate. And then we also, given our emergency for housing affordability, didn't want the plan to be completely unconstrained by cost, and to dream so big that Flagstaff can never, may be pretty, but never affordable. And so that really was some of our big, big thinking ideas that were touchstones all through the process. And I just wanted to put this on there, because you'll never see them in my staff report. Though they might be mentioned, but like, really, when we get into hearings, what you're going to be looking at is, did we meet the statutory requirements? Are these policies we can live with going forward? So I hope you'll keep these touchstones in mind as well. So what is in the draft plan? What's changed since that 60-day review? Overall, this plan compared to the current one, which is the appropriate comparison. Sometimes people will try and compare it to existing zoning, or to a plan that is a totally different plan, like the 10-year housing plan. This goal, this plan, what you are comparing it to is the Flagstaff Regional Plan 2030, which is our current general plan. That is the document this will replace. All those other plans I showed you on those other screens, the ATMP, the Carbon Neutrality Plan, the Housing Plan, the Water Plan, they will all exist exactly as they are the day after the ballot is done. Whether or not it's approved. So I just want to make that really clear. But overall, we have fewer goals and policies. We went from 97 goals and 490 policies to 23 goals and about 87 policies. So, we consolidated a lot. We also made sure the Future Growth Illustration had clear land use categories with clear boundaries. The, the way the current plan worked, I was required to, even today, interpret whether a part, what land use category applied to a parcel. So it was a parcel that's on 89A, it's outside the activity center for the mall, is it a neighborhood, or is it a corridor? Someone had to call me into their office to answer that question. That's not a question we're going to have to answer from now on. It'll be clear on the map. We also had originally proposed in the 60-day public review, these implementation guidelines, which were sort of the things that were too detailed to be a policy. And really, that just created confusion, and that was a big conflicting issue, because people would go to a policy, and then go to an implementation guideline and go, well, these are conflicting, what do I do now? So what we did was, we, we took the term guideline, and we only applied it in Chapter 4 to the land use categories. So, every land use category has five sets of guidelines that are pretty consistent. They're about the mix of uses, the whether there's parks and open space, and what that might look like in that category, the housing density and intensity, and some other things along those lines, like some other design considerations. But they're not everything all over the place anymore. So we really tried to clean that up. And on the May, the website, you'll see that the May 2 meeting of the committee is where we took that idea to the committee, and they got to see what we were planning to do with it, and they signed off on that approach. They said, yep, we see the comments you got, yep, we see all these, how this made it messy, and that's a good approach, keep going. So we didn't make that turn without checking in. We also provided more clarity about what applies to what kind of development applications, and what parts the plan are just advising staff, or that left side of the triangle. This plan has fewer major plan amendment categories than the previous plan, but not by a lot. There was like 15, we still have like nine. It's pretty good overall. But we did go back to having the urban growth boundary changes, and providing water services that increase intensity and density outside the urban growth boundary be a major plan amendment. It's important people who don't know what that is know, that the urban growth boundary is not the city limit. It is a separate boundary, that is sometimes in the city limit, and sometimes outside the city limit. And we established it in 1994, and have not made changes to it really much since. We also have changed some things about the way we would apply this material, and we'll go over that in more detail. But we basically have created some tiers for findings of conformance, so that if you're just doing a zoning map amendment, and nothing you're doing requires a plan amendment, the most important thing is you conform to the land use element, or Chapter 4. If you are doing something that triggers a plan amendment, whether it's major or minor, you would have a stepped-up analysis requirement. Today, we kind of do the opposite. Well, I'll go over some history. In prior to 2014, we only looked at the land use map and the elements associated with it, and we never looked at the goals and policies. We completely flipped that in 2014 with the current plan, and we, really, 90% of the analysis is goals and policies, and really, the land use element's just a filter to get you there. This is an approach that is closer to what we think the state statute intends for this document, which is that if you're good with the plan and the land use element, you should have a, a more tailored approach to a finding of conformance than if you are not. And the state statute has some language about that, where it says, conformance findings are about the land use element. Now, if you're mending it, you're doing something outside of what we originally imagined, and that's why we want to kind of have two tiers, which will be an important part of what we discussed during the hearings. We also have, for the first time in the plan, some pretty reasonable administrative changes. There are only six of them right now, but we're actually going to propose a seventh as part of the hearings, because we had some conversations with folks that really brought up something I hadn't thought of, which is, we're going to keep getting plan amendments for, until May 2026. Like, people who have properties, and they want to rezone them, can continue to apply for, and be deemed complete for a plan amendment. So what if a 2030 plan amendment gets approved, how would that be reflected in the 2045 plan? So what we didn't want to do is have people do two plan amendments, like, well, you applied in 2030, but now the 2045 map is out of date. So we're going to propose that you, as the commission, add in a new administrative category to help us bridge that time distance. I'm going to go back quickly to what the plan is and is not, because I feel like that's really critical to the conversation going forward. It is our community vision. It is supposed to prioritize and guide future development, and help us achieve our priorities. It provides a lot of really interesting, useful maps, that are both informational, and also help us know where policies apply. It can be a tool for anyone to use in their decision-making. It's always a very nice thing when someone shows up at a concept plan, or shows up at a pre-application meeting, and they've looked at the plan, they've got an idea. They say, hey, what we think we're doing, or we want to do, kind of fits your plan. That's a good, that's a good communication piece, and happens in some regularity. It also is this double document, where it really makes sure that in the Flagstaff Region, we have these shared policies. But is not a mandate for or against development. It will not change that growth projection that we talked about. It'll be prepared for it, but it won't change what that means. It is not a requirement or prohibition for a specific land use on a property. So many people said, you should make sure no one can build a hospital here. I understand that that's a very controversial thing. But it also can't affect a single land use like that. Every single zoning category in our current zoning code allows a hospital by conditional use permit. So, no one building a hospital has to rezone. And that is just a reality. So there's things like that, that like, if people are really going, I don't want my neighbor to be able to build what they want to build, or I don't want to see this here, the plan will never answer that specific of a question. It's not the zoning code. There are many things people want the plan to be able to do, but what they really need is the zoning code, the building code, and the engineering design standards and specifications to be updated. And that's really critical. There were times where the current plan felt like it was trying to update them for, for other areas, and that made a really inconsistent application of the plan over time. It doesn't replace the city and county budget, or the capital improvement planning process, which are carried annually by our City Council, and it cannot obligate them to execute any part of the plan through that process. It's really important. We have action items, these are suggested action, action items. I do plan for the staff to report on them annually, but if they don't get, if things aren't getting done, it, Council may have many reasons, like a recession, or competing priorities, why something is not getting done. It doesn't obligate them to do those things. It's not a strategic plan. The housing plan, the carbon neutrality plan, those are strategic plans. They talk about operation, they talk about maintenance, they talk about strategic alliances. This plan does not do that. It is not a strategic plan, it is a land use plan. Land use, transportation are the heart of it. It's about building stuff, and how stuff gets built. And it's not unchangeable. It can be amended when we need to amend it. The current plan, within three months of adopting it at the ballot, I realized we had missed something in legal review, and one of the maps didn't meet the state statute. We immediately started a plan amendment. We just said, well, looking back at it, this is something that was missed, and it needs to be fixed, we should be complying. And so we fixed it, we didn't wait. So, things that need to change, conditions that change, the plan should live into those Take a quick break. Are there any questions, before I jump into something more specific?
Thanks, Sarah, for your work on this so far. I know you put a lot of effort into it. I have a question regarding, sort of, the public input process. How do you ensure that the plan adequately reflects the broader public sentiment, understanding that there are certain demographic groups, or community groups who might be disproportionately or passionate about certain elements of the plan, that might be more inclined to participate in the public engagement process?
That's a good question. I think that Commissioner Mayor, one of the key things that we do is we make sure there's a lot of opportunities to show up, that people have access to. We heard from a lot of people who have never commented on a zoning case, and who have never commented on the plan before, because we did that additional outreach. I think passion brings people to the party, like, it's why they would spend their free time showing up to talk about planning with us. So that's great. But, you're right, when we had times where the passionate people were pointing in different directions, that's when we used the committee, that's when we, we brought the Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission together for the retreat. We tended to use those sounding boards for that. The technical advisory group that met on scenario planning was another example of how we made sure that there was a group that was meeting that wasn't just staff, when we hit those moments of, like, we have intense passion about something, and maybe not everyone's on the same page, and how should we walk the line there?
Sorry, any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Sarah. So I want to talk about what's the most important update to Chapter 2, I think, going into hearings, because I want to know if there are questions about this. And I got two slides on this. So first, currently, when someone comes in and they request a zoning map amendment, what we tell them is, we say, what you're proposing is in the correct land use category. And when you get past concept plan, you will need to prepare a goals and policies analysis. And there's 500 goals and policies, 500 plus, and you just have to dig through all 500 of them, and pick out the ones you think apply to you, and then I review those and say, actually, that one doesn't apply, but this one does. And that's, that is literally how we do the review right now. So, I've done that for 10-plus years. I've learned a lot. I'm putting that learning into this revision. The way we are rewording this is saying, the zoning map amendment must conform to four things. So if you are coming in for a zoning map amendment, we'll first check that the zoning category you propose matches the right ones for the land use category. This is all in Chapter 4, not 3. Read, read through number 4. Then, there are a very small list of a dozen guidelines for all land use categories. One of them is, and they're really, I call them, they're no-brainers in some ways. One of them is, don't build in the 100-year floodplain, or limit what you're building in the 100-year floodplain to be compatible. That's actually required in the city, but the county has some slightly different requirements about it. So we got those 12 or 15 no-brainers. Really, people should be conforming to those. And then each category has a guideline that they will also need to conform with. So it's not just, do you have the right zoning categories, but are they organized the way they should be for an urban neighborhood or a suburban center? Do they meet these criteria? It's always about a page worth. So these are going to be the first three things we look at. But then we also moved up the transportation framework, which includes the road network illustration, the trails maps, both regional and urban trails, the bikeways map, and the great, grade-enhanced, and enhanced and grade-separated crossings. Sorry, I don't know why that one was hard to say today. Those are the maps in what we call the transportation framework. So if what you're proposing would keep us from ever building a road, that we have acknowledged in our model that we're going to need for future growth- that we have acknowledged in our model that we're going to need for future growth, that would be a hard pause. That would make us take a harder look and consider if you need a plan amendment for this. So that's, those are the things that really should trigger that idea. Like, "Do you need a plan amendment?" If you need a plan amendment, then there are six priorities, and I'll talk about those in the plan. And we would ask that, at a minimum, you analyze and show you are substantially furthering at least two priorities. There's, and the reason this language is important is that substantially further is actually the language in the state statute. It doesn't say you have to match everything. It says, "You've got to substantially further a part of the plan." And it's going to be hard for anyone to show that they substantially further everything. They're probably going to be helping us on a few things, and other things might not be relevant to their case. So this is how we designed it. But those other priorities that they might not be furthering, they are not allowed to be contrary to them. So they might be helping us have resilient infrastructure, but if it's a giant carbon emitter, it's not helping us on climate action. And that would be the kind of thing, when you're reviewing those cases that have plan amendments, you would say, "Hey, our finding is that you're contrary to a priority, even if it wasn't one you analyzed necessarily as part of your application." So it doesn't give up anything, but it says, "You've got to show us how you're helping us meet these big priorities and goals for the community." That's really what people should do in their application, is show us the contributions that they will have. Now, text amendments to the zoning code, which are the kind that you did earlier tonight, those will still go through all the goals and policies, look at the desired density, and be, you know, a little more aspirational than this approach for the right side of the triangle. I think, and I'll show you the flow chart I made. Who's excited by a flow chart? Anybody? So this is kind of how it goes. You come in, do you conform to 1, 2, 3, and 4? If the answer is yes, we're going to do a little analysis and get you moving. This is not going to be as big a deal, but you are going to have to show you're conforming. If you're not, a plan amendment's going to be required, either to the land use map or to one of the transportation maps. And that's where you'll have to show you're meeting, you're substantially furthering, which is meaning they can support your proposal at least two priorities. Then we'd make a staff recommendation, and it'd end up in the same process. But this is our way of trying to help streamline and tier decisions to the information that's most relevant to them. I think you can remember probably, there was a case where there was a car wash that wanted to demo its building that had a car wash and a lube shop, and they just wanted to get rid of the lube shop, and they had to analyze like hundreds of goals and policies. That didn't seem proportional to the change they were asking for, right? That's exactly the kind of examples we thought of in trying to reimagine what this could look like after talking with council on the 24th of June. Any questions? Okay.
No, but I do, I like a flow chart.
Thanks, I appreciate. I appreciate people need to see the words and see the flow chart. So if you did have to come in for a plan amendment, we would still have major and minor plan amendment categories. It's important to note that since the last plan was adopted, the state has changed some of the rules about major plan amendments. Once upon a time, if you wanted to do a major plan amendment, you had to have a pre-application meeting with the person in my position between January and March 31st. If you missed that, you wait till next year. And then you had to meet a bunch of deadlines before July 1st, or we also would just kick you out and say, "Come back next year." That's not how it's done anymore. The way it's done is that, once your application for a major plan amendment is complete, then you have one year to finish it. That gives us a little more time. It also means we're not always hearing major plan amendments on the same day like we used to. Like, we used to hear it only in December. But now you could have a major plan amendment anytime, but if they did take a year and a half, I'd start, you'd still start over. So like, it's a little more lenient, but it's not unbounded. It is still true that if you trigger a major plan amendment, your zoning map amendment or annexation or whatever entitlement process you're trying to get through has to be put aside. The major plan amendment has to go forward by itself, and then you can come back and apply for your entitlements. So it makes it a two-phased process. That is just the way the statute's written right now and the way the city code is written. So that's important to know. But we are changing some of the way these work. So the way the current plan's categories work is if you're in an activity center, which is that bubble in the plan, and you want to go up in intensity and density, that is minor. If you want to go down, it's major. And then if you're outside of one of those, the opposite is true. So we wanted to be more flexible on that. Really, the reason you want people to go up or down in density and intensity is really about whether there's utilities there or not. So we took a step back and we're using the urban growth boundary. So if you're inside the urban growth boundary, which is where we have already analyzed that we would like to be providing utilities, and utilities function best when they're efficient in serving density and intensity, and you want to go up a category, then that is a minor amendment. If you want to decrease, you're trying to do something very low-density, but you're using water and sewer and transportation that's been built out for future growth, that's where that connection of, "Are we really getting resilient and sustainable facilities and utilities out of this?" should trigger a major amendment. And a lot of the additional analysis that's required for major amendments are about schools and police and fire and economic impact. That's not required for any other kind of zoning map amendment or plan amendment. That is required for a major amendment. So think about that, too. Like, if you are decreasing intensity and density inside an urban growth boundary where you have water and sewer, but you've got to get a letter from the school saying you're not going to overrun the school system, that's very backwards, right? It was sort of written without those ideas in mind, I think. So 1 and 2 are basically like, if you're in the urban growth boundary, we prefer you go up than down. And if you are outside, we are not really interested in seeing your density and intensity grow substantially from water and sewer. Likewise, any expansion of urban growth boundary, and this is the additional language, to allow for an increase in intensity and density would be major. What this means would be minor is those property owners who are like, "My well dried up, and I'd like to be brought into the urban growth boundary." There might be a lot of things we want to talk about with that as we get through the hearings. I expect we'll get some public comment on it, too. Changing an area to a corridor that does not have direct access to an arterial or collector road. Somebody said, "I want to build a corridor out here," but they didn't have the transportation infrastructures to support it. We'd really want to dig into that a little more and understand why. Or maybe they're proposing a new corridor that we had not planned to build. That's the kind of thing we want to make sure, is getting a hard look. And then, similar to the current plan, any decrease in the area of parks and open space and federal lands and working landscapes. So if you wanted to take something in those categories and make it anything else, that's major. And then for category 6, the current category is addition, modification, or deletion of a goal or policy, and we just changed it to just deletion, if you're deleting it. And that would include, I would argue that includes, if you're modifying it to essentially delete it. That would be something you could look at. If you had a minor amendment come forward and you're like, "You're essentially deleting it", it would be a reason you could say no. Administrative changes. These are brand-new. We've never had administrative changes before. But they're updates to formatting, typographical areas. Really important that I get the opportunity to update URLs. Hundreds of URLs. The current plan has zero citations. This plan has hundreds of citations. So we're regularly going to be checking them. I'll also tell you, I have downloaded everything that's cited in the plan, so we have a PDF of it as well. Because sometimes things get taken off the internet over a 10-year timeframe. Scrivener's errors in mapping or text. Sometimes we find those right away and sometimes way down the line. Hopefully, we're looking for them now. Changes to the future growth illustration adopted by the city or county within their respective authority, which can be incorporated into the other jurisdictions' plan without further amendment. This is the Belmont administrative change. The Coconino County changed the Belmont area's future growth illustration, and we never updated it in ours. So now, if the county does that, they go, "Hey, we're changing Donnie Park's future growth illustration. We can bring that as an administrative change." And we just notify, say, "County made the update. We're making the update. Now we match again." So then we are not too past averging in the woods like we have been. Identification of a new park or open space that the city or county has adopted by ordinance or dedication. So what you'll see in the open space and parks map is that there are some places where it says, "City or county land that has like a partial open space dedication or recreational amenity." If the city has a piece of land that had some other purpose and council says, "This is now open space", we could just administratively update that from blue to green, essentially, on the map. We would also allow Tiffany, our zoning code manager, to update if the name of a zoning category changes or a new zoning category is created, to propose in her ordinance, without a plan amendment, where that should go in the zoning table for compatible land uses. So that would be part of your ordinance and not a separate resolution. It would still be a council decision. It would still come through P and Z. It just doesn't need to do it twice and with two different instruments. And any factual updates to the informational maps. We had some examples of significant natural resources that we left unmapped at this point, because we did not feel the available data was accurate enough to use. If for some reason we find there is a data source that's comprehensive and great and we want to put it in the plan, we could do that as administrative change for an unmapped resource. And we really looked. We called every federal agency. We talked to every researcher. I promise, if it was reliable and covered our whole region, we put it in the plan. So we want to be sure that if someone's got a great new data source and it helps us with our informational maps, that it's available. So these are our six priorities, which we organized as a universe of priorities for this reason. They all have interactions with each other. They all have gravity towards each other, different kinds of, you know, particle interactions, essentially. The reason we called the core priorities "non-negotiable and central" was because if we have emergencies declared for both of these, and if in 10 years we weren't making progress on them, that would be very serious. We would really question whether the plan and all the work we've been doing was going to get us where we need to go. But all of these other things, a healthy economy, our existing and protection and conservation of our natural and cultural resources, a walkable mixed-use community, and our resilient services and facilities, they support those things. They are part of the core priorities. And that's why this was written this way. The core priorities are how we organize Chapter 3, which has the goals and policies. So you can see, we still have plenty of goals. Several of them are about different elements. I get a lot of questions on why parking is part of housing attainability and equity. So I'll just address that. Parking costs money, and that money, the cost of it is passed on to a property owner or a renter or a business. It's an N. That is, the whole part of the high cost of free parking, which is a well-known transportation planning book, is those seem like invisible costs, but they have big consequences for affordability. So we tied our parking directly to, "How does it affect the costs?" We don't want to lose that part of the plan. Climate action, you can see, has several elements to it. One thing to note about some of these categories is going to a priority-based organization means all the transportation stuff isn't together anymore. Transit and multimodal transportation are under climate action. Oh, and it went way too fast. But freight and rail is under a healthy economy, and our transportation system as a whole is part of a mixed-use community. So if you selected any of those three as you're where substantially furthering it in your analysis, you would cover transportation. Parks and recreation is similar. If you pick a walkable mixed-use community, you're going to have to talk about accessible parks, recreation, open space. If you pick natural and cultural resources, you'll talk about open spaces. So take a look at it. It does not look like the current plan. But these still cover all the required elements that we have in the state statute. Any questions on this?
Commissioner Norton?
Yeah, I wanted to take that slide right there. Just for some clarification, you know, our declared emergencies for housing and climate, obviously, those became the core priorities, but we are so much more. And that's, I understand, that's why the complementary priorities are there. But when those emergencies were declared, is there some legal definition of emergency and what that did to the priorities and emphasis of the business of the city and how it trickled down into this regional plan?
I could not answer that question, but I know Jennifer Michelson is maybe still here, and Jenny Niemann is online from Sustainability. And maybe they could speak to that.
Yeah, hi, Jennifer Michelson, again. I would have to pull up the resolution adopting the housing emergency declaration from 2020. It did set forth fairly specific action items for city staff to get us on this path toward, you know, focusing resources and energy on housing. I'm fairly certain that the regional plan was not specifically mentioned in that. It was a little bit more... What was a good example? Like, I just have to have the resolution up in front of me. It literally lists it all out, like, "Here's what we're going to do. We're going to do these things." And so it was not looking to, I can say, like, it was not looking to specifically impact our regional planning efforts. What it did call for, I believe the 10-year housing plan was born out of this housing emergency declaration. And of course, our 10-year housing plan does very specifically address, it has strategies for how we're going to, how we did revise our regional plan. So I guess it kind of, our, you know, our interest in influencing regional plan policies was kind of more born out of our 10-year housing plan and not necessarily that declaration. Is that a good? Yeah, I can find the emergency, the declaration, that resolution and have it sent to you guys if you're curious. Every, about once a year or so, I have to go back to it to look at, "What did it tell us to do specifically again?" Because it was a series of things. We've made really good progress on it. So if that would be helpful to you guys... Oh, that's Jenny. She can speak to the carbon neutrality plan, too, as the other core priority. Go ahead, Jenny, I'm done.
Thank you, Jen. Hi, folks. Jenny Niemann, Climate Action Section Director in the Sustainability Office. Give me one second, I'm so sorry. Sorry, folks.
Thanks for making an appearance, Ellen.
Yeah, I'm sorry to not be there in person. We had some childcare conflicts, clearly. So I can speak to, the emergencies are not defined in any statutory way. It is not a legal definition. The emergency declaration, particularly from the climate side, which I'm more familiar with, is really to say, "We have a crisis in our community and we are responding to it." I believe housing is the same. So that is really what those do. They do not require any inclusion in the regional plan. And I believe that, you know, the question is really, "How did these end up here as those core priorities?" I think Sarah can speak to that, but I just wanted to speak to, you know, they're not any sort of particular statutory sort of document, those emergencies. They are ordinances that are adopted by the council. And I believe that they kind of ended up here because of the feedback that Sarah had received through the process, as these are, you know, reflections of those community priorities. I'm happy to answer anything else if needed.
Thank you.
Yeah, and so the way that we treated the emergencies and the associated plans, because they each have kind of a strategic plan, as I said, this is not a strategic plan, those are strategic plans, is that we made sure that, from the beginning of scenario planning, that we could actually generate an idea of what land use scenarios would move the needle on housing affordability and which ones would move it on climate action. And what we found is it's actually the scenarios that did the best did the best for both. And that is because housing attainability is a climate action and making sure people are not... And making sure people are not starting to commute 70 miles to get into Flagstaff or longer. And some people do that now, but encouraging more people into the community to live and work here and not make those extraordinary commutes was actually really critically important. And that it did matter how we increased housing. It was not just increasing housing availability. It was that we did it in existing neighborhoods, where there's transit, where there is walkability, and that new neighborhoods have that transit and walkability at their core as well. So as you can see, that is how we ended up saying, well, these are, these are really twin stars. They belong together. There's not, they're two separate emergencies, but we won't make progress on either without making progress on both. And that's sort of how we ended up here. And I will tell you, over and over and over again, these two topics dominated the public comment by far. So housing attainability, whenever we sent out, and we did this about three times in the process, opportunities for people kind of rank a list. We called them, once we called them growth principles, and once we called them like trade-offs. And every time we did it, housing affordability was 20% more than any other priority. Tells you how much the community is feeling the pressure of affordability. But then when we sent out drafts, the climate action feedback was intense of saying, were we getting that right and where was it incorporated? So those two topics completely dominated most of the feedback. We have these emergencies. We have two plans. You will get as part of your hearing packet, a table that takes all the policies from the, all the policies from the carbon neutrality plan and the relevant action items, because these two plans were written a little differently, from the tenure housing plan. And I parallel them to what's in the proposed plan. So you can see, it's covered. And for carbon neutrality, I don't know where I am on housing attainability. I'll have to look at that one. But I do know for carbon neutrality, there were only four policies that weren't addressed in the plan. And they were mainly focused on education, maintenance, and budget, which are outside the scope. So I think we covered everything in the scope of both. Not always in the same way, because here we're not in a strategic plan. We're in the land use context. But we really tried to make sure those were fully integrated.
Thank you.
So getting through the priorities, what are, what are, what happens with all these specific plans? We have, specific plans are a category of plans that are adopted and are directly related to the general plan. They are not operational plans. They are not strategic plans. They are supposed to refine the land use plan for a specific topic or area. So they are usually geographically defined. Southside Plan, Plaza Vieja, McMillan Mesa Village, Woodlands Village. But they are sometimes citywide, like the High Occupancy Housing Plan. That's the rarer of the two. This, adopting a new general plan sometimes creates, creates conflicts between that plan and these previously adopted specific plans. Remember, some of them were adopted in the early 90s. So this is just a thing that does sometimes happen. And generally, if that, the way we divide that out is if, if a plan was adopted by resolution, which is the same level and instrument that we use to adopt the regional plan, and we find a conflict, the regional plan prevails. If, I generally, we have gone through, Lauren, I should say, our neighborhood planner has gone through these specific plans, and we have tried to make sure we're not having any major conflicts. It's part of why we remapped the south side a little bit. But we may find some down the line. So this is, this is number one. Some of these are adopted by ordinance. The McMillan Mesa Village Area Plan and the Northern Arizona Hospital Plan are both adopted by ordinance. The regional plan cannot override an ordinance. And so, but we, if, if any of those plans were requesting an amendment, then it all comes back into play. That is the way things have been done, at least since 2006 in Arizona, because of the way the statute was written for growing smarter. With this plan, we would like to rescind in the resolution one of the existing plans. The Woodlands Village specific plan is complete. We've done everything in that plan. And there's only a few development criteria that conflict with our current code and are not helpful. So we've, we've been using this, you can't override an ordinance with a resolution. So we haven't really been following some of those because we're not required to, required to follow our ordinances. And then it has one very strange little piece to it that says, no other conference facility can exist in this area. And so it's very land use specific. And it's, I don't think it's preventing anything right now, but it's not a really necessary part of it, and it conflicts with our code. So people might come in in that area and say, well, I want to build this, but then their specific plan says you can't. So we'd like to just put that one to bed. It was adopted in 1998. Some of, sometimes they're done. So that one we feel is done, and we're going to propose that it is rescinded. So that is my, most of what I'm going to cover tonight. I just want to talk about the logistics. The plan's online. I showed you where. This is the website. We have a specific email for written comments for your public hearings. You should have gotten a few, maybe like three or four so far. They should start rolling in. This email goes to staff, the city council, and all of you as planning and zoning commissioners. So if people send their email to the email that you see on your agenda, it's going to get forwarded to me, and I'm going to forward it this way. So you'll get it twice. If they send it to mayor and council, it's going to get forwarded to me by the city clerk, and I'm forward to you, and council will get it twice. So I would just encourage everyone to use this email. So every decision maker in this process from this point forward gets one email. Just help us, there's a lot to do. And then I'm keeping a folder of those. And every time we're here for a hearing, I'll package it up and stick it in your packet up to that point. People can also attend these public hearings. I want to talk a little bit about the ones on the 10th and the 24th. Another strange little requirement of these two public hearings for a comprehensive plan update is they have to be in two different locations. So your next meeting on September 10th is not here, is at the Aquaplex. It'll be a little different. We're going to have to maybe, I will try at the beginning with Alex to discuss, how are we going to do things? There will not be mics in front of everyone. That room is mic different. It's going to be a little bit of a work, but we want to make sure everything is heard online and in person. So we'll just be patient and work together. The other thing is that that building closes, and they mean you got to leave. So the first hearing will end at 7:30, period. And will, we, you will, and if it ends earlier, great. But the commission will continue the hearing. So if you didn't get to speak on the 10th, you will be called on the 20th. We'll take all those cards with us. And if you show up on the 24th, we'll call your name and let you come up. And that hearing can go until you're too tired to go on. I will, I will put the caution flag in front of you that council learned from the last round, the regional plan in 2013 had like, was on a regular agenda of the city council, and then they just continued it for 10 more meetings, which I feel like might have worn the planning staff out forever and ever. So they started them in September, and the last one was in December 13th. So nobody wants that either. It's too hard for the public to follow. It's hard for us. It's hard for you all. So they have scheduled a special meeting, given themselves a good six hours to do the whole thing you're doing over three meetings. So if we're not done on the 24th, we have one more. Am I right, Alex? There's one more P and Z meeting before the 9th, if we had to bump. But we may also want to discuss if you want to have a special meeting if we're running late, if we don't feel like we're finishing on the 24th. It would be nice not to have council have to reschedule that, because we put it on their calendars a very long time ago. And it, it could delay the process up to two months, just to get another date on their calendars. So that's my request on the timing. Alex is checking. We have one more. There's like one on the 8th, the day before. So if you were like close but not quite, we could take a little time on the 8th. But if you felt like we weren't close, we might bring the calendars on the 24th and find one more date to continue to. So that's our incentive to all work together efficiently. And to that end, staff is going to help you track edits. So first thing we're doing is giving you an errata. I'm going to define what an errata is. An errata is for non-substantive corrections. It says FO instead of of. If said, this comma got moved into a weird place, or there's a comma where there should be a period. Or you know what? We recognize that the wrong data got pulled for this map, and we need to update it. That is a non-substantive correction. Yep, the 10th is the Aquaplex. The 24th is here. And then the 8th is the day before, the special meeting. So just bear it in mind. So the errata is for your non-substantive. We already have a list of 10 of them. And I don't know how many times I can read this document, but I always find like one more little thing. Like instead of stew-ward ship, it said stew-war-ship. Where'd that D go? What the heck? So lots of eyes on this. We had a technical editor. She'll stay up at night for everything we find on the errata. But then I looked back at what we did in 2013. And what they had at the time was they had a parking lot. And so when the commission or council heard something that they wanted to come back to later, let's say someone was standing here giving their public comments, talking about their comment letter, one of the council members or commission members could say, I would like that comment letter to be in the parking lot, so that we'll come back to it. I don't like the term parking lot. Probably going to call it like the holding zone or the holding space or something like that. Just our, put it on a hold.
Because parking lots cost money.
Parking lots cost money. Thank you, Chair Mandino, exactly. But we'll start that list. We'll number them all. I'm probably going to have Elsa and Lauren over here from my staff just sitting there, like typing and tracking them and refining them. And then when you get to the point where you are ready to make a motion, before you do that, we will pull it up, and we can go through it and say, do you want to include this as a condition? Do you not want to include it as a condition? And what they did in 2013 was they just said, with all the conditions of approval in the parking lot. And then staff turned that into a more track changes-like document. And I can show you it. I pulled up the 2013 one, so that council, when they received the plan, also received like an attachment that had all the track changes that planning and zoning had recommended. And they could kind of see it in that context. So that is, and then an option too is if we have enough time, if we're not doing it on the 8th, if we're doing it on the 24th, is that we could make alternate pages, so they can see it on the page it would be on too. It'll just depend how fast we move. So let me pull up that example, so you can see what, this was the, this was the 2013 parking lot for text edits, and they had one for map edits too. They had a little preamble, and then it said, here's all the items. And these are all in track changes. We're going to add this. We're going to mark this up. I might do it a little differently, but it's okay. But that's essentially, oh, there we go. I don't know why that view is weird. But they essentially did it this way. So we could go that route. That's, and I think this is very straightforward and clear. We want it to be that way, because it'd be nice if council was actually adopting a document with all your changes, or was at least given that option.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes, thanks. If we ended up bleeding over into the 8th, how would you ever create that document for the next day at a council meeting?
Oh, I'll show you. I got a plan. This is how I'd recommend we do it, is that we create a parking lot that looks like this. And then we just go down the list, and you would say, do you want to include this as a condition? You know, yes. Do you want to include this one? No. And you could make some of those decisions on the 10th. You could make them on the 24th. We might be working over multiple days, so I figured it might help to know the date in case we wanted to review the tape, which is something we sometimes want to do when we're finalizing edits. But yeah, if it's the night before, I'm only going to send them something that looks like this. If you give me a week to make it prettier, I'll make it prettier and make it easier to follow. So I have a Plan A and a Plan B for this. And it's probably going to be some people sitting in the back doing the typing and getting it ready for you, so we can pull it up and run through it.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point?
Madam Chair, Sarah, at first I just want to compliment you and staff. I've, over the years, read a lot of documents, a lot of comprehensive plans and general plans. And the writing is excellent. You've, it's very thorough, well-written. And I really think for the general public, because it gets confusing, these documents, the way you've put those hyperlinks in for definitions. So I think you've done a super job on this. I just have a couple of questions, going back to the major and minor amendments. On the major amendments, you know, I understood that by statute, and I'm glad they changed this, you can only apply once a year, and that was awful. If you're an applicant as well as when you're staff. So I'm glad they changed that. But what I'm concerned about, especially since we're concerned about affordable housing, if you have to go through that major process, you can't then apply. Because normally, before, you could run them concurrently. You would have your major general plan amendment, and then you would have your zoning case. And then the planning commission and council would first vote on the general plan amendment, and then they would, the next motion would be on the zoning case. So by bifurcating that, so is there any other options? Because also too, if you're doing a general plan amendment, as an applicant, you want to show, this is what I want to do. So you're kind of making an application. Can you provide a little background or guidance on how that might work?
Well, I know other jurisdictions, Commissioner Shihei, had allowed you to run them concurrently. Flagstaff has never allowed that, not since the 90s. Yeah, we've always required them to be sequential. To me, that's not something for the regional plan to address, because where it really exists is Title 11 of the city code. So, but we haven't changed that part of the city code in over 30 years. And it does make it a little weird sometimes, because major plan amendments are very conceptual. And we also are the only jurisdiction that requires a traffic analysis of a major plan amendment, which is also very odd. No one else requires that. And so I think we've, that, that to me is going to be a separate question from the regional plan itself and what it can do. I do think right as, we are going to start to work on code updates to Title 11 and start having work sessions on them even before this goes to the ballot, because, or is, the ballot is done, because we'll want to be very quickly making sure that there's no conflicts between our code and the new plan.
Well, when you think about it, how do you do a traffic plan on a bubble? You have to do something. So that's in conflict in of itself. And if you're trying to do more affordable housing, you've just added a huge amount of cost to then take a property out of play for a year or more. So I hope we do revisit that, because that's, doesn't make sense. And unless it's statutorily required, I hope we would revisit that. Then the only other small comment I had, it came up many years ago, but one of the comprehensive plans I had a project under, there was a conflict between the map and the text. And, you know, I was reading through, I got through most of it, but I didn't see that, you know, we had to get attorneys and the city, I mean, the council and everything else. It was complicated. Can you put something in the plan, like one, the text override? If there's a conflict, the text overrides a map?
I think that that text is kind of hidden, but I think it's on the future growth illustration.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to throw that in, because it, it caused a lot of problems for everybody involved. And it was, we had to go into some old court cases, and it was another one of those unintended consequences.
Yeah, let me get to the right page here. Maybe I went too far. But I do think we, you're correct, that this draft may only have that language on one map. Maybe I was thinking the wrong way. I'm in chapter four. Okay, here we go. Sorry, it's kind of awkward. But does say, oh, it just says they don't preclude a property owner from exercising their current available private development or entitlements. I think if you wanted to make sure that, I could add that to the, basically the tracking list. But you'll have to like as a body approve that. We're at the point where staff can't make updates without it being part of the recommendations. But I could add that as a recommended addition to the staff report too. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I just want to see, if I had half your brain, I'd be, yeah, I wish I did. So I mean, I'm very impressed by you overseeing the plan and how the plan has come so far from where it started. So thank you so much.
Thanks to all of you. And I hope, you know, we've got three or four more weeks together to be considering this. And so thank you for all the time you will be spending thinking about what I've spent the last three years thinking about.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? I do, okay, so Mary has a question.
So I just have a question, like when I was reviewing it, you know, personally in preparation for this meeting and for my open space meeting that I, right? And so if I find little things, you know, that might be on that, what'd you call it? The errata? Errata list, should I submit those to the email? Should I submit those to you? I mean, maybe you already have them.
I think submit them to the email is probably the best thing to do. And then they're just on the record and I can add them to the errata as we're going, or I should say, people behind me typing can add things to the errata that are caught. We do have a list of some already. So we might have caught ones, you see too, but people see different ones.
Wonderful job. The only comment I would have is I see things that impact what we're doing in terms of both the plan and then eventually the zoning regulations that'll come out of it. And the one thing that really gets me is that at the state level, there's been several kinds of legislation that came through. And it always sets the bar at 75,000. And so it includes us, where it could have been 100,000 and exempted us. And so I guess in the future, I just hope that both at a staff level and an elected official level, that they're fighting back at the state saying, don't make it 75,000, make it 100,000 and give us some control.
Thank you for that comment. We do have a comment from the public and I will call, and I just have one right now. So if you want to make a comment, if you please get your post-whatever this is, your card over here to Nancy, if you'll raise your hand. And then I'll recognize you for comment. But right now I have Russell Randall. And if you will state your name and address when you come up to present. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I am Russell Randall. I lived at 1199 West Corey Drive in Flagstaff. I've been living there for like 50 years. But, but thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Today I'm speaking on behalf of Barrier Free Flagstaff as well as the Northern Arizona Community Practice Transition Team. These are both advocacy groups for folks with disabilities in our community. I'm also a commissioner on the Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living. But today I am not representing the commission. I'm representing those other two groups as well as my own thoughts. As someone who has thoroughly reviewed both the public review draft as well as his public hearing draft, I wish Sarah was here, but congratulations. A huge improvement, huge changes, and we truly, truly appreciate it. You know, sometimes folks do not listen to the needs of the disability community because that is sometimes a silent voice. But in this situation, Sarah and her staff have absolutely listened. We see huge improvement, many, many more inclusions of things like accessibility and inclusion and universal design from one draft to the other. That would be especially true in Chapter 3, the goals and practice are policies part of the draft. Lots of mention about how to meet the needs of disabilities or disabled people. And we really appreciate that. Something we would like to see more actually is there's more mention of accessibility and inclusion in the goals and policies part than in the action items. And we would like to see probably that reversed or at least balanced out a little bit more. The action items I think are kind of the more important part of the draft. Another concern we have is that throughout the draft, lots of maps and charts that are not accessible for people with visual impairments. They're all color-coded. And if you have colorblindness, you can't see those colors. There are ways to make those maps more accessible. So it's just something I think for the, for folks to consider. And then I think our other concern is that there's really very little or no discussion of accessibility or inclusivity in Chapter 5, which is the social and economic systems, the housing and the employment and food demands. And there's no discussion at all of disabilities in that section. And perhaps we would like to see some, some things included with regards to that. But again, thank you Sarah and her staff. Great job because a lot of information included in here really talks about how to meet the needs of people with disabilities in the community. And we really, truly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up would be Robert Booth. And if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in regard to the rezoning or zoning. I am a resident of Flagstaff since 1959.
So could you state your name and address?
Robert Booth. I live at 1107 West Thoma Way in Coconino Estates. Obviously, since 1959, I've seen a lot of growth in Flagstaff. One of the things that concerns me is the increase in population generally in the metro area, the larger area of Flagstaff. The permanent residents of Flagstaff since the 2020 census has declined insignificantly, 0.22%. However, it does not take into consideration the overlay of outlined areas and their population growth. Doni Park, Beterville, Belmont, et cetera. One of the things that concerns me as I look around Flagstaff is the explosion of the multi-unit apartment complexes to address the need, I assume, of the NAU population growth. Now, you, you might consider the fact that, well, my, my main issue is water sustainability. The last study was done in 2012. Flagstaff residents, which I agree with, are under water restrictions. However, the apartment complex folks are under no water restrictions that I'm aware of. The concern I have is that if we do have a sustainability report that was done in 2012, one of the things that they cautioned us about was environmental change, climate change, was population growth and consume, the, the, the level of consumption of water in Flagstaff. I think it's time for a new sustainable water study that takes into account not only population growth, but also climate change. If we're under, the residents of Flagstaff are under water restrictions. But those who are residents of the units in these apartment complexes are not, perhaps that should be a consideration in regard to a moratorium on new construction. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay. So this was a, the first of public hearings on this or the introduction of the public hearing on this.
Work session.
Thank you, work session.
Yeah, I wanted to offer one comment on the public comment, if I may. Russ mentioned accessibility of maps. And one thing I want to experiment with, we, we need to approve a plan, but we could create online maps that are, if you've ever seen like a true, a map that truly works for someone who's colorblind, it's sometimes can be very hard for people who are not colorblind to read it. But we, we can, some of the things we can think about with this document too, or that we can, we can create tools online that keep refining some of the things, where the document kind of has to be in an adaptable format. So that's just a, his comment made me think of that as we're working through the hearings. Remember like some things can be like a tool to help us implement the plan and might not be a change to the plan itself in terms of what we send to a ballot for adoption. I had not mentioned that, but it was a good example of like, it's on our to-do list of make a colorblind web app for, for the plan. And we've never done that before, but that's on my to-do list right now.
So is there a way that you could have two, you know, things for maps that it would be for color, colorblind or not colorblind? So that, because you say it's a little bit harder for the general public to read a colorblind map.
I think we could do it on a web app. That would be, that would be like here, here's the link to get to a version of maps that you can read if you're colorblind. And yeah, we have good testing sites for that now too. So it's not a guessing game. When we used to do it, I used to go to somebody who was colorblind's office and be like, can you tell these colors apart? But now computers do it for us and you can like move some little dragging things and it shows you whether it got better or worse. But it's just, that's just a, a thing worth mentioning because that is a piece of what we can do. Like we can send these 200-plus pages to the ballot and then create a bunch of tools that make it easy to use and accessible beyond what we send.
Okay, and Commissioner Norton?
On that same line of questioning, I was attending Open Space Commission on Monday, but I was online. And I, we talked about, or it was talked about, one of the maps had various shades of green, gradients of green. And I think you had a change or, anyway, could you repeat that and explain that again? What you were, what you were doing to improve that particular map?
Have to go look at the plan that I downloaded. Hold on. I know what map you're talking about. Chapter 3. Oh, here we go. See, now that I'm in this, I can do it this way. I'm sure it's 311. Yeah, here we are. So you can see like we got a lot of comments that this map, people were like, oh, picture canyon's the wrong color. But it's not. It's just that this turquoise bubble made it look a different color. So we were going to administratively, like it's on the errata, switch these to like hatching so that it's easier to see the color through it. So that's like an example, that's a good errata example. Like to me, that's not substantive to the plan. It's just how we display something on a map. It wouldn't change the polygon at all. That's a great example of like something we put on the errata for you. Any other questions for me? Should I go over one more time? What's the last slide of like what's next? So the hearing process? So the next meeting on the 10th, you won't be in this room. We'll all be at the Aquaplex. It'll be from 4:00 PM to 7:30. We'd appreciate if you arrived a little early so we can do some sound testing with you, if that's possible. At least if a few of you showed up, it would be helpful. We'll probably be there around 3:00 to set up. And then on the 24th, you'll start at 4:00 as well, but be here. And we'll go until public comment is complete and you have finished your parking lot if we can. And then council's hearing will be on October 9th. So all of those have been advertised already, all those dates. And we'll re-advertise on the 9th because we have like those timing things we have to do for newspaper ads. But if you continued, we'd get some social media blasts out and try and get additional dates on people's calendars. So.
So just FYI for future, because I will be there, but it does happen, the 24th does happen to be a Jewish holiday. So, but I will come to P and Z. So, thank you.
Chair, I'll also be out of town on September 10th.
Commissioner Norton?
So I just kind of wanted to reiterate the, the process, if anybody's, you know, making comments, that obviously even like the comments that were made to hear, here tonight, they really should go to that email and be as specific as possible as to what kind of change one would want to see in the document so that when it's put in our parking lot, or if it gets, you know, elevated to the parking lot, it could easily be, you know, supported or not and clear as to what the revision to the document would entail.
Correct. Right, that, and then we're really encouraging written comments. If you provide a written comment, you can still come and give, you speak for three minutes. But the written comments will help us, you know, be ready to quickly cut and paste and populate that parking lot, which will help us be able to do this in two meetings and not 10.
And could you state that at the beginning of the meeting on the 10th and the 24th? Just to remind people that
Yes.
you would like them to make comments to the email address as well?
Yeah, we could put that up at the beginning. That's a really good suggestion, Chair Mandino. We could put that up at the beginning and say, even if you speak tonight, we would really like you to put your comments in writing so that they can be easily translated for the consideration of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We can even help people. We've sat in the back and typed up comments for people at other meetings. And I'm sure we'd be happy to help if someone needs assistance.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Norton?
So being that I sit on Open Space as the liaison, you know, as you know, because you were there, that commission has a letter prepared with specific recommendations and edits to certain verbiage that's being honed down. Will that letter serve as, how could that letter serve as? Would the whole letter go onto the parking lot? Would each individual point go onto the parking lot that they choose to make? How would something like that from a commission or, you know, a citizen group, if they're going to put it forward, several comments or recommendations for edits? How would they fit into this format?
Staff would only add things to the parking lot that a commission member wants to see on the parking lot. We would not automatically populate it with public comments. So for instance, a letter from the Open Space Commission to you with, let's say, seven suggested changes, you as a commissioner could say, I would like you to add numbers one through five of the Open Space Commission's letter to the parking lot. And then we would do that. We'll have them all in our inbox too. Or you could say, I want all seven of their items in the parking lot. But I think the other good thing about showing the parking lot today is the expectation is you need, you need to make it coherent, concise and make your change requested very explicit. Otherwise, it will be, it will require you all to come up with what you'd want to see changed based on that feedback. You know, I always, when I have coached people on writing comments in the past, at this point in the process, say, if you want it done, show them how you want it done. If you don't, they might just go, that's too hard to figure out and we're really far in this process. And move on as decision makers if a commenter is not very specific about those things. So, yeah, I don't, what would you do if a comment said, I didn't read the plan, but, right?
Right, yeah, or just general, you know, visionary type comments. You know, there's nothing that we can change about that specifically. So it would be the responsibility of planning and zoning of us here as commissioners to say, for example, take those comments from another commission and say, and elevate those to the parking lot. "Take those comments from another commission and say, and elevate those to the parking lot." That's how that would work.
Right. You also, as commissioners, could, you should not email your ideas to the email, I should say that. But you could bring them in writing and email them to staff after you make your verbal comments. So, I should make that clarification. Staff and council who could have an email quorum on accident if they use this email. So, staff and council should not use this email. And I know there's some council members online who heard me say that, and will maybe send a reminder of that as well. But you should send them to staff. So, thanks for bringing that up.
So, can you state that again?
Sure.
If you have comments, or...
This email goes to all of you. So, if you sent Chair Mandino an email to it, it would be a quorum. And we would have an open meeting law violation. So, do not email this email. Email to staff. Correct. But that's not true for anyone else. Everyone in this audience should use this email, because then you guys are all getting it. That's the trick. You're a smaller group. I believe you guys can, can get it together on that. But yeah, then we, if you send us something directly, you will also need to verbally say, "I emailed you some things I want on the parking lot" and tell us you want it added. We're have to do that here in this meeting, but you could preload us ready to do that.
Thank you.
Good questions.
Any other questions, comments? Sarah? Wonderful job. Thank you very much. We appreciate all your knowledge. I appreciate that you can just go, "Oh, somebody asked a question," and you know exactly where to go. Is amazing. All right. We're down to item seven, miscellaneous items to and from commission members. Mary?
Last night, I was at the city council meeting, and of course, they talked about the rezoning that we had seen. And I just wanted to pass on that Mayor Daggett thanked P&amp;Z for their good work on, on that. So, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Anything, thank you, Mayor Daggett. Anything else that is to and from commissioners? Hearing none. We are adjourned at 6:43. Thank you.